I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council to order 6:00 PM Thursday, February 6th, 2020. As is our custom, we will have a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilperson Lauter.
To the land of Indiana State for America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilperson Oller.
Present.
Councilperson Azar.
Present.
Councilperson Boland.
Here.
Councilperson Crossen.
Present.
Councilperson Devon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Here.
Councilperson Lauter Milk.
Here.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. As is our custom, the first thirty minutes, we designate as public comment on items that aren't on the agenda, and I would like to remind you that we do like to limit that to three minutes if possible. So if there's any comments from the public, please come to the microphone, state your name and address.
My name is Donald Hyde, and I'm going to talk about something right now that's not on the agenda. However, what you're going to hear me say will be determined a lot by what you decide later on the agenda. Gentlemen, I want to remind you, gentlemen and ladies, that there is something that happened this spring, if not, it might be postponed until this summer, but within this year, it will happen. They're going to close a four-story building at Eighth and Chestnut that has nothing but county, city, and state government office buildings in them, and none of those places will be able to close. No, they're going to have to move somewhere else. Now, because they were all in one location, it was easy to get to, catch a bus, whatever. If you had to go there, you could get there. Now, they're going to be scattered. Now, you as a city councilman, your job is to see to it that they don't get scattered too far away. Like, right now, we've got the main food stamp and welfare office at Plaza North. Shall we now take one of the other government offices that the poor and the working class or the unemployed needing to find a job? Shall we send that way south, way east, where we need it here in the city? And I don't mean to tell you, you can walk around the city, these eight square blocks that I consider downtown Terre Haute, and you can see there aren't too many places to even build. There are not too many places to own. However, luckily, as if God's helping you, there's two places that suddenly came alive, came available, that weren't available until the last few months. And lo and behold, that would be the school corporation, why they're moving out of their headquarters, I don't know, you know what, I don't care. But they are, and it's a good building, sound for a nice building, could easily stand for another forty, fifty, sixty years. And where is it at? Seventh and Wabash. I could think of at least two businesses that are going to government office face that could locate in that business. For instance, instead of the state building a new unemployment office, they could simply rent that place. It would serve, have enough parking to handle that job. So too is the Terre Haute Shreveau Star Building, and it's even more modern. But, and I was for sure figuring that was where the unemployment office was going to locate, then I heard a rumor, and you have too, that the police would love to make that the new police headquarters. And by the way, I'm not against that either, and they're going to be a great place to put the police station. And instead of spending ten, fifteen, thirty million dollars to build a brand-new building, they could spend five, six million to remodel that building, and it would be a great police headquarters, because it wouldn't look like a, basically, a stoplight course. It would look like a nice place to have police, where it would be safe, anybody could be free to walk in there. I like it. Now, could it be used for that, could be used for a lot of things. Now, think to yourselves, and I'm being honest to all nine of you, how many other buildings from Third Street to Ninth or Tenth of the Breveaux, I'll go that far, from Cherry to Papa Street? How many other buildings do these four-story offices that are going to have to move, because you're going to close them out, you're going to turn that into a hotel? And they have no choice but to move, they can afford to move, so I'm not feeling sorry for them. What I'm worrying, why I'm telling you about, is you've got to be careful where they relocate, because every one of those is an important job they do. Oh, and by the way, I forgot, there's one other place that exists, the YMCA. The welfare offices in that building could move to the YMCA, perfect for them. Now, that's, you guys, the city and the county would have to little mow and remodel the YMCA, but I couldn't think of a better place to put that, you couldn't build one better than that. However, that still leaves you three other or four other places that I haven't mentioned. And by the way, I'm mentioning these places as possibilities. There's no done deal anywhere, and by the way, I haven't heard any done deals from them. You guys ought to find out where they're planning to move, because they're going to be moving. If this convention center is going to be built where you want it built, the way you want it built, they're going to have to have someplace downtown to move into. Just thinking about, thank you. Well, I'm done, I just wanted to tell you.
We appreciate it, thank you. Any other comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda? Please state your name and address.
John Crowley, 2525, Terre Haute. I've got a situation where I have tenants, I'm a landlord, and when my tenants don't pay their sewer bill, they send me a bill, the sewage department does, and force me to pay that bill. It's not my bill, but I'm forced to pay it. I'm not, on the lease, obligated to do so. I brought this to the attention of the billing department, went around with them, and they said that they had no other option to collect the money, the city has to get the money somewhere. Well, right or wrong, it seems like they're taking it from me, so I think that needs to be changed. I found out after talking to the John Board, Tammy Fass office, that they, that the sewer is self-run, self-governed, it's not under the rules of the Regulatory Commission at this. But, they said there's no option, I said you can opt to garnish wages, or you could do tax check intercept. Well, just last night, I found you have another option, I didn't know it, but the city has an agreement with the water company, they can shut the water off until the sewer, and that, they have an option of putting a deposit on. And I didn't know this was available, because nobody pointed it out to me, nobody made me aware of it. Were any of you aware of it? Well, now, now you are, so you have another option to go after these people. So, something to think about. And, in addition, I found out that, you know, I'm in contract with my tenant, it's party-to-party. When the city comes in and they force me to pay, that's a third-party interruption, and I don't think that's, that's legal. You check with the Indiana Home Rule Act, see if that's in violation, basically, that's about it.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public?
My name is Kevin Southwood. The Board of Zoning Appeals, BZA, claims that they, that a no-parking lot ordinance would bring the convention center to a standstill. The hotel wants this for their customers, not for the convention center customers at all. The BZA claims that it has the proper authority in determining hardship.
Sir, that's on our agenda, and when we get to that ordinance, we'll recognize you to speak on it.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Well, anyway, I'd also like to recommend, like, you know, I live on one of the avenues, and Third Avenue, it's a, it's a narrow enough street, and you almost have to have a car that's not in a parking spot in order to get two cars around there. At night, it's actually dangerous. So, I would like to see where you have, you have like, streets like Third Avenue and Fourth Avenue, or something like that. Third Avenue has fairly heavy traffic, Fourth Avenue doesn't, but to make some of these roads like a one-way street, and just do something like that, you know, like, in four different sections of the town, you know, to, and then let the people judge, you see, because I really think all of these streets, because they're so narrow, and if, you know, because there's city buses that drive down them, or school buses, not city buses, but school buses, so, you know, if, if they were one-way street, you know, you wouldn't have to worry about somebody pulling out in front of you, parked the wrong direction or anything, you know, because everybody'd be parked the same direction, but, you know, the biggest concern is when they're coming down the street, and particularly at night, you know, you wonder if you're going to get your, your car sideswiped or your mirror knocked off, you know, and, and a lot of people that go down there, you know, hell bent, they're not going to get out of the way, and you just hope you don't have a collision, so, you know, if you made them like a one-way street, you know, one way and then another street, make it going back the other way, you know, and just see how that would reflect for like a year, because, you know, all our streets are so narrow, you know, unless they're a main drag street, they ought to be one-way.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public on non-agenda items? Okay, then that part of the discussion is closed. Corrections to the Journal?
There are none.
Communications from the mayor?
I did not receive any.
Reports from city officials? Well, that would be neat. I have appointed the members of the city council committees, I won't read them all off, each committee member does have them, if anyone would like a copy, I'm sure that we can get those made for you so that you can see them. Basically, there weren't a lot of changes, I just kind of, the people that are no longer on the council were replaced with the people that took their place, so basically, that's what I did. And that is just the Terre Haute City Council Committee members. At this time, I will announce those people that I have, I will appoint to certain boards, and with the exception of, I believe, one appointment, I don't think there's any concerns or questions. The 911 Advisory Board, I will, Councilperson Crossen. If you have a problem with these boards, let me know, but I believe that some of these you were already on. The Economic Development is Councilperson Lauter Milk. The Information, the IT Advisory Board, Dr. Steve Genowitz, and I'm still waiting to hear from the other person that was interested, so I won't mention that name yet until I get a confirmation. The Transportation, Councilperson Elliott. Downtown Terre Haute, Councilperson Devon. Riverside, Councilperson Garrison. And Solid Waste, Councilperson Nation. The one that I have not made a final appointment is Redevelopment. We do have three individuals that expressed interest in, in serving on that board, which I'm pleased to, that we have three people that are interested in serving on a board that doesn't even pay anything. So, in the spirit of transparency...
Mr. President, I'm sorry, can I interrupt? Could we go ahead and have a motion to accept the ones that you listed?
Yeah, if you want to do that before we do this, okay. Do I have a motion to accept those appointments that I have listed? Move for approval. Been moved by Councilwoman Nation, seconded by Councilwoman Garrison, that we approve those appointments that I have listed. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. Now, at this time, I would like, if Michelle will pass out a ballot, I had put the three names on a ballot, Karam Nassar, Jim Nichols, and Brian Conley have expressed willingness to serve on Redevelopment. I wish I had three appointments, but unfortunately, I don't. So, two will be elected, or will be appointed to that, and again, in the spirit of transparency, rather than appoint two, I will ask the council to, to do their voting and make them vote for the two that they would like to have on the council, and in no way expresses any kind of a disappointment or adversity to anyone that does not. Unfortunately, we can only do two. You will know who votes what once we turn these in, so every councilperson has their name on this, and they will, and Michelle will read who voted for what person. Okay? Everybody just hold them up, please, passing to me, and I'll give them a business shot. And if you'll bear with us for a couple of minutes while she counts the ballots, I would appreciate that. I will say that we also have an appointment to Human Relations. As of today, I have not received anyone that has given me their, that they would like to serve, and I'm just waiting until I hear from someone. So, and I believe there are certain rules and regulations in order to be on Human Relations, and I need to update myself on those. If you know of anyone, and they, are within the rules, I would be happy to consider those names and present them to the council for approval. See how I filled in that lull?
Keep filling.
Tell a joke. Yeah.
You can say.
That'll pack them out, not in.
Okay. Speaking with the city attorney, Eddie Felling, I need to read, and then I'll give you the totals. Ready? Okay. Councilperson George Azar, Karam Nassar, and Jim Nichols. Councilperson, these are out of alphabetical order, give me one moment. Councilperson Amy Oller, Brian Conley, and Jim Nichols. Councilperson Tammy Boland is Brian Conley, Karam Nassar. Councilperson Martha Crossen is Brian Conley, Karam Nassar. Councilperson Earl Elliott is Brian Conley, Karam Nassar. Councilperson Neil Garrison is Brian Conley, Jim Nichols. Councilperson Curtis Devon, good thing we're not doing alphabet. Brian Conley, Karam Nassar. Councilperson Cheryl Lauter Milk is Karam Nassar, Jim Nichols. Councilperson Todd Nation is Brian Conley, Jim Nichols. My totals are Brian Conley, seven, Karam Nassar, six, and Jim Nichols, five.
Okay, if there are no objections, the appointment on this, on the redevelopment, according to the vote, will be Brian Conley, Karam Nassar. Do I have a motion to accept those two appointments? Move for approval. It's been moved by Councilperson Nation, seconded by Councilperson Garrison, that Karam Nassar and Brian Conley be appointed to, appointed and reappointed to Redevelopment. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? So, there we are. Congratulations, thanks for being here. Reports from Board of Public Works?
There are none.
Reports from standing committees?
There are none.
Reports from non-standing committees?
There are none.
Items previously tabled?
There are none.
Tax abatements for confirmation?
There are none.
Items on second reading?
There are none.
Okay, let's go. Items on first reading?
We have a winner. Appropriation one, 2020, thirteen thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars from federal grant number 0306-0000-00330060 to THPD, continuing ed. police number 051-0017-04444010.
Anyone here to speak on this?
Mr. President, members of the council, Steve Locker, Police Department. This is a request for appropriation in conjunction with the 2018 Burn and Jag Grant, a gift from the federal government, it's a reimbursement grant. We spent the money already last year out of continuing ed. to purchase some ballistic helmets for the SRT team, and this will just move the money back into that line item to reimburse.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the public? Counsel? I would remind the counsel that we must vote to take action on this.
Mr. President?
Councilperson Oller.
There's no further questions, I move that we take action on appropriation one, 2020. Second.
It's been moved by Councilperson Oller, seconded by Councilperson Devon, that we take action on appropriation one, 2020. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, we can take action on that. Councilperson Oller.
I move that we approve appropriation one, 2020.
Second. It's been moved by Councilperson Oller, seconded by Councilperson Garrison, that we approve appropriation one, 2020. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Passed. Next item, and I would like to address this, if I can, before we, before we take action on this. What I would like to do, if possible, if the council will agree, is, since next month, or next week, we do not have anything on the agenda, I would like to see, if possible, that we do move to take action on this tonight, but the action to be a tabling until the meeting, the first meeting in March. The reason for that is so that the, those parties that are interested in this ordinance have time to present their case, for lack of a better word, and to the council, so that hopefully, we can see what is planned, if there were to be a parking lot at Seventh and Wabash. And, again, if we don't take action on this tonight, then we would have to meet next meeting, and I would hate to see us meet for this ordinance and not give them enough time to present their ideas, maybe drawings, or whatever they can give to us. So with that said, I will see if anyone's here to speak on this ordinance.
Can I read it?
Oh, go read it.
Thank you. General Ordinance One, 2020, amending City Code Chapter 10, Article 2, Section 10, Dash 207, variances from C9 requirements, every area planning gave an unfavorable recommendation.
Is there anyone here to speak on this?
I'll represent this, since I'm the person who filed it. I, I don't think it's any secret to the folks on the council, or the folks who are here to listen to this or to speak to it, that my purpose in filing this ordinance was so that we could have this conversation, basically. I'm disappointed that the mayor's not here to partake in it, I'm also disappointed that I don't see Steve Witt anywhere, because in my estimation, these are the two people who actually are in control of this situation, to the extent that anyone is in local government. I have reached out to both Mayor Bennett and Steve Witt to just ask them to be prepared at this meeting to tell us what their vision is for this, for this lot, this piece of property, the Beagle Town School Corporation lot, beyond its use as a surface parking lot. I don't want to be dogmatic in this and make it sound like I could not accept a short-term solution that uses that surface parking lot to solve a short-term problem for the convention center and/or both of the hotels that will serve it. But, it's a significant piece of property, it makes sense to have a community planning discussion about it, and significantly, we were not sold a surface parking lot at Seventh and Wabash as part of what we were told was going to happen when they came to us, the city council, seeking our approval for what they needed to do. This is a, I helped write Special Ordinance 17, 2002, which this ordinance, it's before us tonight, General Ordinance One, would seek to modify. I remember that process well, even though it was eighteen years ago. It predates my involvement as a city councilperson, I was not an elected official back then, I was a bookseller and a person who was active in the Neighborhood Association, the Downtown Neighborhood Association, leadership. We had a lot of attorneys involved in that, Rick Shagley, Bill Ola, Lou Britton, some of these guys are still around, they're all still around, some of them are still active in the council and representing resignings and redevelopment commission and other things, important public things. And, at the time, this, the whole process and what we put into Special Seven, Special Ordinance 17 was a, was discussed a lot, both inside and outside the city council. Since I know that ordinance pretty well, I thought, oh, well, it makes sense to just remove the possibility of asking for a variance in the C9, and that is exactly what is in front of the council. That said, though, what I really want is what George asked for at the beginning here, to have a grown-up discussion about what that's actually going to look like long-term. My fear is that if we just let this happen, they are, they, the CIB, Steve and Duke and others on the CIB, are trying to solve a short-term problem. The problem is, where do we park a hundred or so cars for the two hotels that will serve the convention center? When they deemed that the parking garage that they told us they were going to build at Seventh and Cherry was going to be too expensive, or too hard to build, or whatever the excuse is, they started looking and came up with the parking, with the lot across the street, the property across the street. My fear is that if this becomes the solution to how to park a hundred or so cars for the hotels, that as long as the hotels are there, this will be a surface parking lot serving them. And I think that's unacceptable. I yield.
Thank you. Even though we may table this, I, because I do see some people here that might want to speak on this, I would ask that it be a little limited discussion this evening, since we will be bringing this back, hopefully, before us in March. So is there, are there any questions or comments from the public?
This is the part I said that there'd be something that I want to talk about. As a citizen, a lifelong citizen of Terre Haute, Indiana, as a person, as a child who can remember downtown Terre Haute in its heyday, literally its heyday, I loved it. You could walk six, seven blocks, and you could feel like you saw a real downtown, a real city. There was all kinds of stores, there was all kinds of shopping, but the key word is, we were willing to walk from Main Street all the way to First Street, and, yeah, we didn't need a car. Of course, we had a good bus system back in the sixties and the seventies, and the town was alive, you wanted to go on this. When you ever cared, mom said we're going downtown, well, we ran, we took one of the clothes. It was a, it was an outing, a specialty, and I remember to this day, sixty-plus years later, for God's sakes, that's how good it was. Now, you're going to tell me that these people are going to build this convention center, lie to you. lie to you, say they're going to build this one thing and take care of all the parking for the hotels, then they're going to have another building, a high-rise parking lot over here on Ninth and Wabash, that will take care of the convention center parking. Now, all of a sudden, they're having problems. And so now, they're going to say, because the, the park, the area around the School Corporation is selling their building. Now, mind you, I already said that that building is one of the newer buildings, it's a nice building. What do they want to do with it? They want to spend taxpayer money to literally buy the thing for five, six million dollars, and then tear it down to put a parking lot there. One, I'm against the waste of money, especially taxpayer money, and two, under no set of circumstances do I, and if it was taking a boat in this city that we live in, would most of the citizens that live here want a parking lot at Seventh and, um, Wabash? Seventh and Wabash? I'm already unhappy with a little bit of parking lot that exists for the School Corporation, you know, that two-lane parking lot right behind this beautiful thing, you got a little park thing with benches to sit down. It's one of the nicest things that's been done at Seventh and Wabash in, uh, fifty years. And yet, I have a hard time taking a picture of it, because the statue and all that stuff from trees, what do you see right behind it? A parking lot. Now, you guys want to tear down the building beyond that and make a huge parking lot out of it? You guys are constantly harping for the last two and a half years I've been here about the tourist business. Well, I'm telling you, as a local person who likes to come downtown and was as a child to this day, I like coming downtown, but you want to be able to take a picture, you want to have somebody come down with friends, you want to have an event that you remember. What am I going to remember now? And so, that's what you're telling me. I'm going to remember that the heart, the main, Seventh and Wabash, the Crossroads of America, it's got a big parking lot? It'd be ugly. Has no purpose there. Now, if you want to build a parking lot, you build it at Fourth and Wabash, because you can go from Wabash all the way to Ohio Street, and you can go up four stories, at the top of the fourth story, they could actually have a place where you put up a fence, so nobody can climb up and throw themselves off the damn thing, and you could see the courthouse, City Hall. You could have something that would actually bring tourists here to go up there and take pictures of the most, one of the most historical places in all of Indiana. They could see it better.
We wrap it up now.
But instead of that, you guys want to, what I'm basically saying, and I'll wrap it up with this final comment.
Thank you.
I'm tired of us taking and putting a Band-Aid on a store, on a problem, a Band-Aid that you gotta then replace and put another Band-Aid on, and it never heals. You have a problem with parking, build a parking garage to end the problem. Do not build a flat thing that can only hold baby cars.
Thank you, Mr. Hyde. Any other comments from the public? Please state your name and address.
Mike Gordon, 1933 South Thirty-first Street. I'll try to keep it real brief. I'm here really to speak about the narrative and the politics that have been going on related to discussions of the parking lot. On the news this morning, I heard that the convention center is on hold, waiting for a determination about this parking lot. Now, the convention center ground was broken. I was there when the county council voted to approve the tax to fund it and to make appropriations to the Capital Improvement Board. I believe you've already appropriated money to the Capital Improvement Board. There was no hold on it. What has happened in the last couple of months that is different is an opportunity. An opportunity is not the same as a hold. Members of the Capital Improvement Board, apparently from their public statements, have seen an opportunity to take that property at Seventh and Wabash and make it there, to their economic benefit. In other words, putting a parking lot there is going to be cheaper than the parking garage that they showed us, that we appropriated money for, that they planned on. The plans were going along, the ground was broken. The only thing that was different was the School Corporation came out and said, we may move the administration building. And that created an option then for the Capital Improvement Board. Has there been an appraisal of the building? Not that I'm aware of. Has there been a definitive plan for when the School Corporation might make that property available for sale? Not that I'm aware of. It's the School Corporation's obligation not to save the Capital Improvement Board money, it's their obligation to maximize the sale of that property. Meaning that unless there's some sort of deal going on here behind closed doors, there's not a bargain basement at Seventh and Wabash. That building has value. The School Corporation has an obligation to local taxpayers to get the most value out of that. That is something for you all to consider. From our brothers at the Capital Improvement Board, I think it's very important for them to come forward with their plans. I thought it was really nasty of Steve Witt to suddenly come out and say, oh, the project's on hold, we can't do this because we, we need this property. That may be a good plan, or it may be a bad plan, but it's a plan that the public has a right to, to hear about. It's a plan that you need to best, to make sure it is fully vetted. It is a plan that will impact the future of downtown Terre Haute, not just the aesthetics, but businesses and all of that. Right now, you've got a business operating, the, the School Corporation is operating at Seventh and Wabash. People go out to eat. I work in the downtown area, I wait in line behind people from the School Corporation who are going to restaurants downtown. I think it's important, you know, the cap, the, the, the convention center may generate a lot of business, I think it's important for them to explain that in a very public way. I think it's important to not muddy the negative, the narrative by making aspersions about plans for that property, and anybody who would like to see something different is killing the convention center. That's bull. Either that is bull, or when they were telling us to appropriate the money, when, when they were telling us to raise our taxes to fund that center, they didn't have a fully fleshed-out plan. Either way, it's not the city council's fault, it's not the School Corporation's fault that they haven't abandoned their building quick enough to get the moving going, it's no one else's fault. It's either bad planning or dishonesty, and I think that all needs to be fully vetted before you act on it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Comments from the public?
I would like to preface what I'm going to say with what he said.
We need your name.
Call me around.
You know, I know it.
As a twenty-year business owner across the street from that parking lot, the Verve, and twenty years of running Blues at the Crossroads, it horrifies me to think that there would be a parking lot across the street. That won't benefit me, won't benefit any of the merchants that are on Wabash, between Seventh Street and Sixth Street and east of Seventh Street. The parking lot, from what I understand, will only be for hotel customers or tenant and, and conventions bureau. And such an eyesore to me, to think that that's what's going to be across the street. I, it, I don't know. I mean, I've spoken with members of the city council about what other ideas to do with that space, whether the building remains or not, I'm kind of outside of that, but I think there's a lot more we can do with the Crossroads of America than pour some concrete and say, you know, I have people coming in from all over for the Blues Fest, and I have people coming that stay at the Hilton in Candlewood that are visiting from Chicago and all over the country that are here for business, that come into the Verve to have a cocktail, and, you know, there, you know, we have a reputation here that we don't want to progress, and I would say pouring a big thing of concrete right there would definitely make that obvious that we are afraid of progressing in this town, so.
Thank you, Connie. Any other, any other comments from the public?
I'm Kevin Southwood, and I would hope that before you guys make a decision on, on the parking lot, that it, in the downtown district, instead of having one entity that gets all the say for the most important piece in the downtown district, that before you guys make a decision, you get a survey of all the business owners and ask them what they want there. And if you, if they don't know, they get, you could say, do you want a, a parking lot there for the motel, or, you know, or, or not, you know? And, and other rules, you know, if they have an idea, they could just, you know, I would like to see this, you know? I, I think that, you know, you could, you could use it for, you know, like, you know, have an area for like all the, all the college campuses to put on stuff, you know, for, you know, culture classes, ethnical foods, you could have, you know, to educate people about the different cultures in the world, you know, that's right here that we don't know nothing about, you know? You could have car shows there. You, you could incorporate Seventh and Wabash down with Gilbert Park to where you could have like a, a rock band, you could have a country band, you know? So you, you could even move more of the area in downtown, and you could have events there, you know, like with folding bleachers, where you could have a, like part of the Blues or something, you know? That would, you can't fill up a bar with only a, a small bar with so many people, but, you know, if they all got together, roped it off, hell, they could have a lot bigger bands and a lot bigger grouping there for people to be able to do something, you know? And, you know, offer ideas, you know, and, and vote on the best ideas that people would like seeing things that come there, rather than a parking lot for only one entity. But anyway, I was talking about like, uh, the BZA, uh, the Board of Zoning Appeals, you know, and they talked about the hardship to, to grant relief from the city council, as the code is written. One of the Bagel County, uh, county's hardship of losing two-point-three million dollars each year to pay for this convention center upkeep and cost, for a convention center to be built, and even before it's built, it, it can't stand on its, on its own feet. And, and not even that, it gets two-point-three million dollars yearly in order to be built. Twenty years is demanding a payment of free money equal to forty-six million dollars. You know, a project that after built takes out forty-six million dollars out of other projects, you know, you give me two-point-three million dollars, the first thing I'm going to do is I'd put a zip line across Wabash River, you know, to give people something to do, you know? That could bring money in, to pay for upkeep on convention center that only brings in something once a month for one day. If it might be a, a, a big parade and a big, beating on the drums and stuff for one day, but twenty-nine days out of the month, it's, it's dead, you know? But anyway, we've already got two golf courses that are, that are money suckers out of this community. Now, this convention center, it, it, you know, if you put forty-six million dollars in twenty years on building projects for things to do for people, you would have a lot better town than a, a one day a month at the best, and, you know, Holman Center didn't have things one day a month, you know? So what makes this convention center going to be some miraculous discovery, you know? But anyway.
What about, do you have anything else to say?
Well, I'm, I'm just going to say that, you know, the Board of Zoning Appeals, you know, said that, you know, they have to have this, and, and they have the authority to get this done, and, you know, but, you know, what about the, the people, you know? You know, if, if you're going to put two-point-three million dollars into the, the cost of a convention center for downtown, help, let, let the, let the people in Bagel County do a survey, what would you want to see down with two-point-three million dollars, you know, because this two-point-three million dollars, it, it just, to me, it just fleshed down a toilet, you know?
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public? Hearing or seeing none, public discussion is closed. Open up for the council. Any discussion from the council? Okay, seeing and hearing none? Okay, one more. I'm sorry, Councilman Elliott.
Todd, exactly what properties would be impacted by this ordinance? Did I understand it, it's Wabash, Seventh Street?
The C9 district is Wabash Avenue between Third and Ninth Streets and Seventh Street from Cherry to Poplar.
Okay. So what that would do is basically prohibit front surface parking?
Actually, I, I need to correct myself. Seventh Street from, it's a T shape, so it would actually be, I think, from, from Wabash down to Poplar. I don't think it goes all the way up to Cherry, but I'm not sure.
Okay. So it, so it would prohibit surface parking on the front of those lots for that entire territory, and ingress and egress to all those lots?
It would prohibit new surface parking lots in those areas, at the front of the properties. The way that the C9 pedestrian core rules are written, there are things in there that you see all the time, but may not understand that they're being driven by the code. The best example is probably the 500 Wabash building, Ellis Place, that was built a few years ago. They tore down a handful of buildings, and those buildings were right up against what we call the zero lot line, the sidewalk edge. And the new building.
I understand that.
And the new buildings also.
With no front parking on any, any, any new parking that fronts the streets in that entire C9 district?
Yes.
Right? And, or ingress or egress routes to, for a car to move off of Wabash onto those?
It doesn't say anything about ingress or egress.
So they would be able to get off of Wabash and get to the back of the property, or wherever there is parking?
I think that if the developer was able to amass a block or half a block of property and ask for a curb cut so that they could...
They have to ask for a curb cut?
Yeah. Then I think that, yeah, they could have that access if they had that in their site plan on their land, rather than using a public alley that would feed it from the back. I don't see an admonition against the curb cuts in the property, in the code as it's written.
Okay. But no front parking?
No front parking. The idea is, along Wabash and along Seventh, in the pedestrian core, for built, new buildings to be built along the zero lot line.
Okay. So do you think this changes, impacts the market value of this property?
Nope.
Based on what?
Do you think it impacts the market value on it?
Yes.
Based on what?
It, it, it's a restriction on the use of the property.
To get the, do you live in a subdivision with, with covenants?
Yes. We all live in a, we all live in a, in a city that has ordinances and rules and requirements.
Exactly. In the subdivision that you live in, there are rules that you've signed on to, then that all of your neighbors have signed on to, so that you can have the neighborhood that you want, and be protected against, so that your property value can be protected against what others might do.
They were there before I bought the property that I bought, and nobody's tried to change them since. And my point is, this is, this is trying to change that for all the property owners that already own property on Seventh Street and Wabash. I yield. I yield.
Any other questions from the council? Any council members?
I would just go a little bit further with saying that the idea of development restrictions downtown is not new. It's not something that, that I think we need to be afraid of. And I would argue that in 2002, when Special Ordinance 17 brought a handful of property development guidelines into our code, that that act has helped. And I think that it has helped steer development that's happened downtown since then. I think that it's made a better atmosphere for investment, and I think that you can look all around and see the results of that. When I talk about this, about the spirit of what went into Special Ordinance 17, you can see it all through the Hyatt Palma Downtown Action Agenda, you can see it in other planning exercises. You know, these are charrettes where we have citizens and people from government, all kinds of folks come in, kind of like what Mr. Southwood proposed, and give their ideas and stick stickers on maps, make arguments about why they think that things should be the way, why they think that things should be the way they could be. There were numerous comments about no more surface parking in the pedestrian core, no more surface parking on Wabash Avenue. As a primary use, I'm not talking about behind the building, like the 500 block, the 500 block, if you've gone back behind that, there are thirty or forty parking spaces back there. And it may not be enough for everybody who's upstairs, but everybody who's upstairs goes to ISU and can buy a parking pass that is cheaper than any of the garages downtown and have a place to park guaranteed on campus. Anyway, my, my point is that we've got rules in place. They do provide, right now, for a developer to request a variance, and all this does is take away that right for Seventh Street or Wabash Avenue in the core of downtown. That's it. I look forward to Earl's response.
Any other comments? You want to comment?
Yeah, I'll respond. 2002 to 2020, I mean, there was an eighteen-year stretch in there where this could have, could have come up, and instead, it comes up now.
It's no accident that it's coming up. It's no accident that it's coming up now.
Well, I know, but I mean, it seems like it should have come up, you know, a long time ago before there was a, somebody had a, had a need for that. I have talked to Steve Witt at length, and he has shared with me a number of things, and most of those were in, in the newspaper. But what's important to, to remember is the hotels have franchise agreements, and those franchise agreements contain parking requirements. And these hotels have to meet these parking requirements. If they can't do it, they have, they have a problem. And, and the hotel owner still owns some of the land, so this, this has got to get resolved to their satisfaction and the satisfaction of the hotel company that has it. Okay? Now, I think they got a bad engineer's estimate on the, on the west parking garage, and that's, that's the problem that they have to, they have to deal with, or they're trying to deal with and address, and I think you know that.
I do know that.
Okay. So, I yield.
Councilperson Aller.
Let me just have a couple things. I think it's good what you brought up about, you know, letting us table it to March so we can get some more information. First of all, I want to thank everybody, Todd and everybody for taking their time. What I'd like to see personally, myself, within a month, is I'd like to have information. There's not been hardly any information handed besides, you know, we have the ordinance, not seen any renderings. We've not had a lot of information on what they actually want to do down there, what it's going to look like, what it's going to be. I know, I went through this with the jail, and I thought I made myself clear then that if I'm not going to have information, I don't know, I don't have anything to vote on, that way or this way. So, with that being said, I'd like to see this next month is for information to be given to every one of us council members on here, so we're informed and we know what's going on, so we can make a good decision on what's the best for our downtown. With that being said, I'd like to take action to vote, to vote on General Ordinance 1, 2020.
Second.
Been moved by Councilperson Aller, seconded by Councilperson Crossen, that we vote to take action on General Ordinance 1, 2020. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Do I have another motion?
Mr. President.
Councilperson Aller.
I move that we table General Ordinance 1, 2020, to March 5th.
Been moved by Councilperson Aller, seconded by Councilperson Crossen, that we table General Ordinance 1, 2020, until our next meeting in March, the first meeting in March, which will be March 5th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Thank you all very much. Next, I am.
Warren Village 2, CF1 Forum for Resolution 14, 2016. This is your annual review for compliance. You should have a copy in front of you. They seem to have completed all of the fills, and they included a memo giving you an update on the project. As a reminder to the council and to the new council members, you can vote to state insubstantial compliance, you can vote to say not insubstantial compliance, or you can take no action. If you vote to not insubstantial compliance, you have to sit a hearing within thirty days.
Okay. All right. Do we have any one from the public speak on this? Counsel? Councilperson Nation?
I'm sorry, this is the first time I'm seeing this, and I note that in the memo, it says that the property, the real property improvements for which the tax abatement was approved have not yet begun.
It has not been assessed yet.
Well, I think as a reminder, Warren Village had two projects.
Yep.
And it was Warren Village on 25th Street, and then the second one was, I don't remember how many parcels at various places, so they have not built all of the houses at all of the parcels. It's scattered.
Go ahead. Scattered. Okay. You yield? Yeah. Okay.
Well, and this is the second one in that it's over along the side, and it looks like the estimated date that we did was eighteen. Estimated completion date was 12/1 of 19, so that was after March 1st. So that would throw it not into this tax time, but into next tax time because of it being after March 1st. So they haven't been assessed. Basically, it's just the land still sitting there. It's the way I'm interpreting this form.
If I may interject, on the letter, the memo they included, it states that their tax credits were delayed a year, and then the project increased the number of units from 38 to 40, and they added additional lots to their project. So they have stated, they would not, they were not going to revise it to include the But as Councilperson Aller said, they've not been able to have everything reassessed yet, and they filed it very early this year.
So is it better just not to take any action at all?
No, we still need to.
If you don't find them insubstantial compliance, you can call them in for a hearing.
Or you can, because this is for next year.
Insubstantial compliance for now.
I don't see...
All right. As far as, until we can get the rest of the information. Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council? Do I have a motion? Councilperson Aller.
I find Warren Village insubstantial compliant.
Second.
Been moved by Councilperson Aller, seconded by Councilperson Vaughn. We find Warren Village insubstantial compliance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Councilperson Nation?
No.
Oh, hold on. I would like to remind you that since we do not have any business on next week's agenda, there will not be a city council meeting. Our next meeting will be March 5th.
Do we need a motion for that?
Do we need a motion for that, or can we just go ahead of you? Okay, I just did it. Okay.
And wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you, Michelle. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Been moved by Councilwoman adjourn, seconded by Councilperson Crossen to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you all for being here.
I'm going to say it. I'm going to say it.